Wayne'sville City Council's meeting agenda, August 28th, is now in order. Ed, would you lead us in invocation?
Heavenly Father, we're coming for you tonight, asking your blessings on this council. We will conduct our business in a manner that is beneficial to our citizens and pleasing in your sight. We ask your blessings on all of our horses, their families, wherever they may be, and on the workers and people of the city that keep us going. Amen.
Amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, or which is famous, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have open public hearing for the Ad Valorem tax rate. Do we have any citizens' comments regarding Ad Valorem? Come forward and give your name and address.
She's not here for Ad Valorem, she's here for our park board.
Okay, well, no.
Yeah, yeah, no.
We're at Ad Valorem right now.
This is a citizen's comment for Ad Valorem tax.
Do we have any council comments regarding Ad Valorem tax? No comments? Public hearing is closed. We have a proposed ordinance. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
An ordinance fixing the Ad Valorem property tax rates for the city of Wayne'sville for the year 2022 on all taxable property within said city. Second reading, an ordinance fixing the Ad Valorem property tax rates for the city of Wayne'sville for the year 2022 on all taxable property within said city.
Do I have a motion to this? Ed, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Amanda? Any other discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Farnin?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Coyne?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any citizens' comments? This is not for the park board, this is citizen comments in general.
That would be you.
Okay.
My name is Megan Francisco. You said address?
Yes.
Two one four five five Sail Road, Wayne'sville. I would like to address the city council about the WSR program. I spoke last week to the park board, and I try to get this into whether I should send my letter or not. You want to go over the points or do you want me to read it?
Go over the points.
Yes, sir.
Please.
So I've been coaching with WSR for like three years, four years. My seven-year-old is my old chap, but we've been in the program since she was three and first could play. And so I've seen it both from as a parent and as a coach. We are currently having a lot of issues with game set scheduling and notifications, and I think something that the city could benefit from would be to use some kind of software like TeamSnap. That way the coaches can communicate on there, and the games would be evenly distributed. Currently, we are playing, sometimes we play teams, this is not going over multiple seasons, we'll play one team like three or four times, and we might not play another team at all. And some of those games are very lopsided, so if we're playing a team four times, that's four times one team is going home upset, very upset because it wasn't competitive at all. And then registration, currently our registration for WSR is all in person. We live in a military community, not like I live in a residential, if we did use that software program, we could do online registration, and these military families that are coming in in the spring, they can register their player in February when it opens up the soccer. And so right when they get here, they have something where they can be part of the community and have a team. Team equipment and our equipment changes every year. Like I said, I've been a coach now for I think four seasons, and every time I come and pick up my soccer bag, it has different things in it. This year, I received four soccer balls and I think six cones. So I need to go out and I have to go find a penny or purchase on my dime something for my goalie to wear, you know, my balls for the flight it. There's no first aid kit, every other year there's been a first aid kit, you know, every year it changes, so my thought is, volunteers, let's put back in the tory before and after the season and make sure that it's all there instead of just haphazardly turning it in each season. We're not sure we're going to get back. Field lighting and infrastructure. The soccer fields have lights, which works well for us here in the fall. They don't always get turned on, which is frustrating because sometimes we wait for, you know, he comes out and turns them on, but that's usually thirty, sometimes it could be thirty minutes, or they have a call and we're left out there without the lights. There is not currently a WSR representative out there to turn on lights. And then we also noticed during baseball, baseball didn't start late this year to numerous reasons, and so we were playing late in the evening, and when it played late in the evening, it would get dark and the baseball fields currently do not have lights. I've heard that the flood's taken them out, I'm not sure if that's true or not, but the jail lights would come on after our games, and their exterior lights would actually light up our field that would be adequate for our kids to play. So my thought process on that is, you know, I know it's county money versus city, but I don't know how that works, but possibly teaming up with them and they turn on their lights thirty minutes earlier so the kids can play ball. And I think that would help out even with some of the soccer fields if they can't fit all the soccer fields down where the actual lights are this fall. And then WSR sport representative, I know Mr. Bales, he works, you know, this is nothing against Bales, I have nothing negative against him, I know he works like the typical nine-to-five hour, nine-to-four or whatnot, and so at the evening time when games are being played, and on Saturday mornings when games are being played, no one from WSR is out there. So a few weeks ago for baseball, we needed baseball plates. Someone called, he did wake up and he said, "Oh, I just woke up." Unfortunately, they never got out there, so ended up using parents as the plates. Yes, of T-ball, so I mean, the kids didn't care, but to me that was a missed opportunity because there was not a representative out there on the field, and it was a kind of a frustration to some of the parents, because that was, you know, a continued issue. And I mean, having a representative out there will help when we do have interactions with parents and coaches, or parents with parents, and then you can actually see what the field, you know, the field's like, or how the refs are doing, or whatnot. And then again, Mr. Bales is just one person that I believe that he's the only one that runs the Facebook page. I don't know if any of you have been to the WSR Facebook page. Some days it's professional, sometimes it's not, and I understand that there's a lot of parents who argue with him in the comments and stuff like that. I'm sure that's very frustrating for him to read the negativity posts or whatnot and the frustrations, I mean, social media is harsh, that is, you know, that's what people use as their front, as you can tell, nobody's here voicing their concerns with me, they want to voice it via Facebook. But that, often questions get asked on there, and they go unanswered because of it's a weekend or an evening, and it might be pertaining to a game, or that's how he sends out notifications. So for the soccer, the coaches meeting for soccer, an hour and a half prior to the coaches' meeting, a post was made, and that's how coaches were supposed to know that they had to be here to pick up their gear. And I think more adequate time, or texting coaches or something, no, correct, going back to that scheduling app, maybe you could blast it out to the coaches that have already signed up, and people can be notified and aware where they need to be so they can donate their time. And then lastly, I would like to invite everyone on the city council, come out, come out to the soccer fields, talk to parents, see what's going on during the times.
They're all the time.
So you see that there's, sometimes there's issues, there's a lot of times we don't even play on the fields, we'll just, we play, like I buy personal gear because the fields are taken up, because there's, you know, inconsistencies with different.
So I was a soccer coach for quite some time too, and a baseball coach for Wayne'sville St. Robert. Before I got here, I didn't know what was going on. How much is the budget for the Wayne'sville St. Robert?
So typically, the budget is around forty thousand to sixty thousand, depending upon, you know, what needs to be bought. I've seen fifteen to twenty thousand dollars swing in that budget.
And St. Robert pays half of that, we pay half of that?
Right.
So if you figure Mr. Bales' salary alone?
Yes, sir.
Probably almost reaches that cap. We can't pay him overtime to be out on the soccer fields at night after five o'clock, we would have to pay him overtime, we'd have to pay him overtime on Saturdays and Sundays. We just don't get the funding for it, is the bad part, I guess. As a coach, I used to have a whole bunch of stuff, matter of fact, if you need it, it's still in my shit. I've got planes, I've got cones, I've got soccer balls, I've got all kinds of stuff, so if you give me your number, I've actually tried to get rid of it for several years. St. Robert's is about to take over.
We are in a transition for, the agreement was made several years ago that Wayne'sville would have the youth sports program for five years, and it would then transition to St. Robert for five years, but somewhere in that agreement, there was a lost year, this is actually the sixth year that Wayne'sville has had the program, and, but they will take over January one.
With that said, the app that you're talking about, is there a cost to the app or is there...
It's monthly cost. A lot of the local soccer leagues, like Team Justice uses it.
We have tried an app like that in the past, and...
I mean, it works for a league, I'm not saying there's one.
There's the lopsided.
It's like eighteen bucks a year.
Is it?
Yeah.
But my goal was to offer, like if I have concerns, to offer something, some kind of solution. I didn't want to come up here and just waste your time with like, "Ah, yeah, slow down."
And that's the thing, sometimes the only solution is to actually get volunteers, and, you know, military or stuff like that, they come in and out, but if we get actual volunteers that will come during the day and help Mr. Bales out, they are informed enough to be out on the soccer fields and keep parents from choking each other out. But it takes volunteers because we just don't have the funding for it.
Either that or there's a shift in the time requirement, maybe use them in the times that it's needed, just an idea of coming in half the day.
And I would say we actually tried that three years ago.
We do, we utilize that some, some of the timeframes I'm sure she references, keep in mind, we have signup at a certain time when you'll have a season going on, so fall soccer signup could be conflicting with softball, baseball, or something else going on. But there is definitely, he has the ability to shift his time to cover maybe some evening practices or Saturday games where, you know, the city, and not just Mr. Bales, we've had several youth sports directors over the past five, six years.
Right, I've been through three, I've been through seven.
Yeah, we've allowed them to...
I was gonna say, three years ago, when we did let it, let's say he left here at eight and he came back at ten, all those parents that wanted to sign up between eight and ten got on that Facebook page and cursed him out because he wasn't here and he was diverting his time from ten to six, and then they got mad about the other, so it's almost a double-edged sword.
Yes, I mean, I know that it's difficult. I mean, I donate my time to the coach so I can have, you know, a sword in the fight. I put my time out there.
And you mean that by every parent, I guarantee it.
I do, I get all that, I do. But I, and, you know, and I'm not oblivious that my kid's gonna probably leave WSR and go to a different league because it's a bright league, and if she wants to play higher than, you know, or whatnot, but WSR is important enough to me that I'm standing here and I'm just like, public speaking, it's important enough to me that I'm just being in the community, you know, these other leagues that are standing up, because instead of being here, you know, voicing their frustrations, they're standing up leagues. And, I mean, we gotta do baseball league, we gotta have new soccer leagues, and I, we're gonna lose our players to that, but then the players that can't afford it, you know, they're gonna lose their ability to have a sports, you know, to have some sport play or the mentorship from a coach, and I strongly believe that's something that our group needs is to have that mentorship.
Can I give you my number?
Yes, sir.
So if we have a parent out there that wants to volunteer, they just come up here...
It's on the thing, he told me not to give it out loud.
They want to volunteer?
It's on the front page of the city.
Out in WSR's office?
There is actually a volunteer application on the city's website that they can fill out.
Okay, so volunteers on the city's website, volunteer application.
And there's a vetting process with that as well? Yeah.
They were just talking about volunteer applications on the...
Yeah. It's not advertised, I don't believe, like, you know, Mr. Bales, maybe cry, ask for help, put it out there. I need someone two hours this week to help me out with this. Can we post that on Facebook? Just to hang, we need a...
And can we look and find that app or do we already...
We have tried an app in the past, we tried an app roughly a year and a half ago. The issue with the app is you get everybody signed up and you find yourself spending more time updating the app than actually putting information on the app for people to use. So one example is, we went through one season with a similar app, I don't know if it was this one.
Somewhere, I think.
And what happened was, we got all the coaches signed up, and then two coaches left, and then the parents wanted it, and then we never got it, and then the season was over by the time you had everybody kind of lined in, and it turned out to be a lot of work trying to make sure that the people, and then when your coaches are involved, maybe they got the app and didn't tell the parents, and it really didn't make the job of the youth sports director, it didn't make his job any, it made it worse. Well, the coach didn't tell us, well, it's on the app, we want the app, so you end up having, you don't know who has the app, who doesn't have the app, what coaches told their parents, hey, our practice time was given to us was, you know, six to seven o'clock or whatever the case may be, and it didn't work well our first go on a similar app, maybe not the one that you are, you know, referencing.
Whenever I was coaching, I used MailChimp, but it was only for my team.
I used Remind for my team because we live, the school uses Remind, so mainly everyone has Remind, but that doesn't help with scheduling, you know, all of U6, U8, U10, getting those an equal amount of games.
The coaches don't sit down at the beginning of the year, like the coaches meeting and decide to schedule them?
No, we are told what it is.
And a lot of the scheduling with that, again, with St. Robert, coming up, the sports coming up, excluding soccer, which will be winter sports, basketball, volleyball, those schedules are determined by the school, school district, Wayne'sville High School, Middle School, East Elementary, Freedom Elementary, depending upon what gym you're able to get and utilize for that sport, that depends upon the schedule that we're allowed to have those facilities. So scheduling some of these are difficult. Wayne'sville, St. Robert has one baseball slash softball field that we have tried to schedule as well, so coordination of the facilities other than soccer, and the reason I say that is, all the soccer games are in Wayne'sville, they're all, and practices are all hosted in Wayne'sville, St. Robert doesn't provide fields for that sport.
I did ask to use the St. Robert field, and I was, said I could, and then their speak out saw us out there, and they were like, "You don't believe, we can't be on there." So I, I don't, I think it would be better, you know, avenue just to have, if you're in charge of it that year, why aren't they in charge of that field also, making it a part of the program?
Good questions. Wish I could be answer that one.
We've been asking that question.
I mean, it would make our suits a little smoother because that one's not in the flood zone, we could at least get some games through there, and have these soccer fields, we could put in that outfield if they're not currently playing softball on it. That's all the questions or the comments I have.
You did a great job.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Hey, before you leave, I would like to commend you to everybody in the council and those watching on TV, that you have brought problems to the council, but you've also brought us some ideas and solutions, and that's rare. Most of the time, we just hear the problem that they're having, and they haven't thought through a way to, you know, work through the issue or a solution to the issue, so I appreciate that greatly.
Thank you. I mean, I was gonna add, I heard that there was an opening, an open position for an assistant?
There will be one posted, and interviews will be set up between both cities, yes.
Okay, I wanted to add to that is, I know that the city puts it out on the Facebook page and possibly on Indeed, another avenue of approach, Fort Leonardwood quarterly has a hiring fair, and it's free for employers. Set up both the table, that you can do, there's interview rooms there, and it's all posted, and it would be a greater platform for more people to see that there's open positions here in the community.
John, we have a copy of her letter.
I do.
I'd like you to copy it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. No other citizen comment? There's no special guest presentation? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm going to apologize, I've never done this before, and I'm also hard to...
It's so easy, she joked.
...actually go over a little bit of what Megan's already done. Do you need my name?
Name and address.
My name is Janie Irwin, my address is one zero three Prospect Street in Wayne'sville. I am also a soccer coach, and I've noticed a lot of difficulties as well with scheduling, coaching, and volunteers. I am coaching three soccer teams this season alone, this is only my second year of coaching, or my second season of coaching. Last season, U6 wasn't going to be the option to play unless the coaches wound up taking additional teams. We need more volunteers, we need more avenues, we need to get this out to the public and let them know, these children are our future, whether they are military or they are permanent members of this community. I am here for the kids, or I wouldn't have signed up for three, three soccer teams from ages three to nine. Any of y'all got kids? That's not gonna be fun. And I guarantee you, unless you guys want to come out and volunteer, it's going to be one heck of a soccer season. It is going to be hard because unfortunately, Mr. Steve, he's alone, he needs help. I volunteered last season, I have a medical office degree, I volunteered to do it for free to assist him, never got a phone call, ever. As for us only having forty to sixty thousand dollars a year if I'm correct, for putting towards seasonal and soccer and gearing and everything like, why are we not reaching out to businesses? Tax deductions, that is the number one key to get businesses as well as any members of the community to volunteer their money over. It is a free tax deduction in order to give money to a community purpose. They will do anything, trust me, I've done there, been there, done that. I was in high school when I organized a fundraiser, businesses such as C C's Pizza when I lived out in Joplin, over two thousand dollars versus donations because it was a tax deduction. This is not that hard, unfortunately, I understand that you all are very overwhelmed, but we've got to do better for our kids. I have two kids in the sports, in this community, and I have been in this community since nineteen ninety-three when my grandfather was sergeant major at this post. I've been off and on living in this area, and I haven't seen nothing but the sports teams going further and further down unless it was dealing with the school district itself because they have money from the government and the taxes. We need to have our regular kids also that cannot go into the school and do the sports there because, I'm sorry, I don't have two hundred and fifty dollars to spend on cheerleading shoes. We have to be able to have it to where our military people can come in, a form somehow online better advertised other than Facebook, because that avenue is dying, unfortunately. People aren't gonna know to look up WSR. They're not gonna know to go to Wayne'sville and click on this link. We need to have better advertising for our soccer, for our baseball, for any other sports in this area.
And I know I do most of the talking, I guess, it's illegal for a government organization to elicit money from a private.
Not illegal for a community, it's not illegal for us to go out there and solicit.
You can go out all you want, but us at City Hall can't go ask citizens for money.
Even though it's gonna go into a separate bank account or something like that, then how are these funds...
Well, we can't make a separate bank account outside of the city's budget with a line number on it. I mean, I...
I'm giving that, so I don't know what the...
I get the solution and you're aggravated and everything, but it's kind of insulting. I have kids also, I've had four kids in this community since two thousand, and one was the first time I came here as a drill sergeant. For somebody to come in here and tell me that I'm not willing to take care of kids. I do every single thing, when I sat down at that soccer field, I wrote it, I wrote it down. So we've tried numerous amounts of things, but when you're talking forty thousand dollars for baseball, soccer, softball, basketball, everything, it's just not a whole lot of money. And if the city could go out and go, I own a company in Wayne'sville also, right? If they came to me and said, "Hey, can I get two hundred dollars?", I would give them two hundred dollars, I'd probably give them a thousand dollars, but then the lawyer sitting there in the back is gonna tell somebody that we can't collect money from private citizens outside of a tax, a resolution, or an ordinance.
What about getting parents to do a fundraiser, something that are, have had background checks? Because we've all had our background checks.
And I'm gonna say, parents can do that, but it's the parents have to do it, the city can't ask them to do it.
How do we get the parents to be able to do it? And come together, say, the coaches, we have, I don't know, what are they called, where basically like a little fair, where parents, they come out, or we do a pledge, phone call, or something like that?
Go ahead, David.
You can set up a foundation, five oh one, two three, for all.
We need to get some volunteers, we have, there's always been volunteers to be on that foundation, but they could accept those donations and then spend that money on behalf of the city, but the city itself can do it, right? Correct, but the city could accept, you know, like if they went in and...
So we set a support foundation for the city?
Yeah, like the secondary.
Okay, so we have a foundation, we set it up, and we make it known, we send out flyers or anything that we can...
But the city...
...to the businesses with that in mind.
I'm saying, bye. I don't know, maybe they have a different thing, our hands are tied on a lot of things. So when you talk about, you know, five oh one C, I don't think the city can be a five oh one C, but it's a public entity, right? Well, it's not, but... But we can accept money from a five oh one C, but those five oh one C board members would have to send out the flyers, those five oh one C board members and volunteers would have to do it all. If we took Tracy, for instance, that was on the city's payroll at some given time, and said, "Hey, go be on the board of that five oh one C on the city's time," chances are, there's gonna be about fifteen more taxpayers in here asking me why I'm paying city employees to run a five oh one C.
So, but parents, for example, parents could do it. So if we decided to set up a foundation going through you, we can have it go out and...
I just want to make one comment. When I sat on the park board, I remember the WSR doing a fundraiser. I remember them selling chocolates because we bought all of that candy. I don't know if anybody remembered that, but they were doing fundraisers, and they were, they were collecting money to purchase things. Actually, they came and solicited the, certain teams came and asked the park board, because we had some donors that Mr. Beamer purchased basketballs, or he purchased soccer, soccer balls whenever they needed, he was one of the board members. So they made the needs known, and we fulfilled those needs. I think that the communication at the, at the park board level, we just, we need to get real good at that, and we need to communicate and solve problems at that level, at the park board, because these are simple issues that can be resolved there, because this is not new information. We've always supported the programs, but we just gotta, we have to take it to another level. I just think that maybe there's just a break in communication, I think everybody's effort is there, but maybe just not understanding... Um, I think everybody's effort is there, but maybe just not understanding how things work, 'cause there was a lot of turnover, there's a lot of new people on the park board, um, maybe people not knowing the history of how we used to raise those funds, but I think if we all work together, we can resolve the issue. So we just need to...
And I do not need to insult anybody about...
And I understand you being here, but...
It's very, I'm very passionate about that.
We're volunteers also. We're volunteers, I don't think...
Yes.
Nobody gets paid for this except for the mayor, and he doesn't get paid very much. I think it's like...
Three hundred dollars.
Two, three hundred dollars a month, right? It's just overwhelming, you know, for somebody to come in, I have four kids, I've been here forever. I coached soccer from the time my daughter was on the field, and I had to be in the middle of the field with her.
It's just...
You know, it's, it's, uh, and I do appreciate you being here. I appreciate everybody, I mean, it's just, uh, I wish I could do something, you know?
Well, I do agree, and I thought it would be amazing, 'cause there is very little communication.
We just gotta go dig and go see the, uh, probably dig in some emails and find out that information, but... On that line, if that's something we can...
And there is the...
That's, that's, that's our process. We have a problem with communicating, getting things out to the community, because everybody's not... Always here to hear the information and...
I am, well, I'm last to be... And I know several other parents would be as well. And if we find us on chocolate store to door again, we'll do what we need to make sure that these kids are taken care of.
You can start at city council, they like...
Oh, no. The reason, the reason I'm always running in the park is 'cause I'm trying to lose weight.
When I was on the park board, I ate like twenty boxes of chocolate, and I'm allergic to chocolate, so everybody up here can find some boxes of chocolate.
Even Halloween candy.
But you remember that. Amanda, you remember that?
Yes, we did. We did. We did a lot of fundraising stuff.
But the park board guy is behind you.
Is that what?
The park board guy is, guy is right behind you.
The park board president.
Hi, so you're gonna go on and talk to us?
You got a way, citizens come in, come up here.
We have to. Can a park board raise the money?
I don't even know who would want to dip our toe into that part.
No?
Um, yes, park board's still part of the city. It's a committee of the city.
We just fog into whatever fundraising somebody else is doing.
The parents can do what they wanna do.
Yes, the city, the city can accept the donations.
A McDonald's night.
Yeah, the city can accept the donations, they just can't solicit donations.
Yeah.
So, you know, let's say the five oh one C, and like Nathan will help you set up five oh one C, I think there's a lawyer downtown that I could probably get to help you also. Uh, but Nathan's good at it.
I've done a lot of...
Then we will have a chapter. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more citizens comment? We have two really good ones. No special guest presentation? Boards, park board.
Well, it's hard to follow them, yeah, but I will say that we've discussed those kinds of things before. It seems like there's, uh, I don't know, we get so far and then we just, solutions just don't happen. We have some of the same concerns, and we've had other citizens come in, talk to us about these same things, so we really, we'll start working a little harder on it, but Steve, he's our, he's our man for it. And, uh, and the fundraisers did come from WSR before, they were, they were good chocolates, I should say, as I had some myself. But if there's anything that I can think that we can legally do, other than, other than that, then let me know. We also, we kinda, we kinda think more along the lines of improving the park, or improving the fields and things like that, than, than we normally do, uh, get into leads with the WSR, as far as the volunteers and stuff goes. But that's something we will certainly work a little harder on. The park board received a, last Wednesday, August eleventh, we met, we called the order at six o'clock. The park board received a certificate of appreciation from Team Justice, U.S. Soccer, for our support of the first annual three-by-three tournament. They also gave awards to businesses in our city, along with the police and firefighters. So we had quite a few people here, you know, this last week. And, uh, we appreciate that so much. Now, when it comes to the park, the things that we've been thinking about mostly has been things like, we might see dugouts, where the kids could get into where they're not happy or whatever, or outfielding, so they get, the sun gets pretty hot here this summer. That would give them a little shade, uh, a little bit. We've also thought about a refreshment stand, also a backboard where businesses could advertise, if, and we'll look at the legalities of seeking support, but, uh, from them as they do that. We also continue discussing naming a few of the pavilions. I think we're down about three that hasn't been named or perhaps somebody represented in, so we're gonna work on that, and, uh, and we thought about asking the WCC at the high school if they, uh, could make the metal signs. So, give them a job, they're always looking for, uh, tasks and jobs to do with the skills they're teaching the teenage at home. Rachel Watson, the new director of the Alaska Master Gardeners, was present for her first meeting. She reported that they were going to work some more and kind of leave up to the garden at the R. E. Park. Also, our next scheduled meeting is September the eighth at six o'clock, and we adjourned at seven oh five.
Any questions, Freddie? Joe, I have a question. I think, did we discuss or talk about in the past about some kind of refreshment stand that could be, sit up down there? Did we run into a particular problem with that?
Well, we, um, we are, have in the past, and are going to again this time, our discussion with that was grant opportunities for that type of facility in the, in the park, and these are the same grants that we, um, were able to construct or build our existing restrooms with, um, that we have located throughout the park. Um, this grant's coming up, and we are expecting to apply again for that grant, but yes, there was a, there was a location which they have, we have sent this map to, to this grant several times, showing a location for a, um, kind of a refreshment stand that would, uh, also have restrooms on the backside, some storage areas, we've even discussed as to, uh, being able to have like an equipment room to store the, the bases down there and some other things. So, yeah, you, you remember correctly, Mayor.
Yep. Get with me either if you're here at the end of this meeting, get with me, or tomorrow evening when we're, when we meet together.
Yeah.
And I've got some ideas for you on the covers for people.
Okay. I'll see, I'm gonna be up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Davis.
Ooh. I don't have a report. Just a... Free? Yes, I probably am free. Thank you all for coming. Planning and zoning committee was called to order August ninth, twenty twenty-two, five thirty. The approval of the minutes, uh, from June fourteenth were approved. There was open in public hearing on conditional use permit, uh, conditional use permit to allow a one-hundred-foot radio tower to be placed in the R. Six School District Transportation Building, located off of Highway F. There were some comments from Erica Kruger Brown, owns the property, she stated she was looking at the water tower, ambulance, she said there was too many towers up on the hill. We had some discussion and informed her that the one tower was gonna go up and the other tower was gonna go down next to it. After that, she, uh, was in agreement. Uh, we closed the public hearing, uh, and made a motion to send that to city council. Uh, we also talked about the preliminary plat for Briar Point Estates Two. Uh, Nathan Carmine discussed the plat provided, uh, Angie Gable, uh, she was also here, uh, asked, Twyla asked if the fees had been paid, Nathan said that there was just preliminary, there were no fees yet. Uh, Miss Dills asked why the road wouldn't go all the way around, and there was a lot, uh, basically, uh, that was explained. Basically, Page Street would still be open. Trudy Dills and Scott Owens would like to build or consider connecting the road and looping it around, as there are already issues going up and down the hill. Twyla Cordry, uh, made a motion, or entertained a motion to, uh, send this, uh, to pass it, and it passed unanimously, unanimously. With no further actions, meeting was adjourned at five fifty-four. Next scheduled meeting is thirteenth, September thirteenth at five thirty.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis? All right, we have a proposed ordinance, Bill twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a radio tower at fifteen twenty-five Highway F, Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date. The second reading, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a radio tower at fifteen twenty-five Highway F, Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date.
Any other discussion on this? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Second, anyone? Amanda? Roll call?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corners?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we have a proposed resolution. Reading please.
Resolution approving a preliminary plat of Phase Two of Briar Point Estates.
Any discussion on that, or do I have a motion? Mr. Liberty? Second, anyone?
Second.
Mr. Rice? Any other discussion?
I have a rough idea. Apparently, their Page Street will become a dead-end street. And, uh, they're running, I'm putting a road in and blocking Page Street from joining it. So we end up with another dead-end street. Don't, don't like that.
We have a roll call on that?
I don't understand. Where, where's the dead-end street?
In Briar Point.
Because isn't Jared a dead-end street?
Jared.
I guess I don't understand if, how do we know that's a dead-end?
I, I think he's talking about Jared Street, not Page Street.
No, he said, he said Page.
It's Jared.
Jared Street.
Jared Street comes from one way, and Jared Street comes from the other, gonna make the one end of Jared Street a cul-de-sac.
Right, up at the top.
And put Lot One, where Jared Street would come through.
Right.
So they would make that like a, I think like a hammerhead or something?
Right, so this is the dead-end.
At the end, so their lands can turn around?
This isn't a dead-end.
Looks like a dead-end, yeah.
Does that black line mean it's blocked?
I think that might just be a mistake. I think that road's coming all the way through Jared Street.
So which, which street are you referencing?
Page Street and Jared Street.
He's referencing Page.
Page on this shows it goes through. The, um, the, the black line, the dark black line represents, um, Jared Street. The reason Page Street on the south side is not bold is because that's an existing right-of-way. I do notice that on Page Street, it is forty feet wide, which is unusual, but was approved by council back when this was developed, but Page Street on this plat remains open as a true street and would tie into this Jared Street as, as platted. It's not a Page Street, it's not a dead-end street.
I'm just quick and judgy on...
Mm-hmm.
Is this developer, does he own the land on the other side where we're telling the I.D. is dead-end? Ed's referring to?
No, Ed's referring to right here.
Ed's referring to Page.
Okay. It's not a dead-end.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at, does this developer own the adjacent properties for future development? That's what I'm trying to get to.
I believe just on the north side, not on the west or the south of the Briar Point Estates Phase Two, and I'm not sure, he may own some additional lots, but I know that they have really been developed through the last couple of years.
Councilman Corners, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
No.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, utility committee.
The utility committee had a regular meeting, the second, the power committee was there along with city staff, now, and Chief Visor, Randy Brown, and Chief Pritchard. The minutes were approved from a few previous meetings. We talked about the solid waste sanitation sign-up, and Mr. Doyle gave us a, uh, presented committee with, with a sign-up form slash agreement to review, and this form will be hand-delivered to each commercial business in city waste. That is in progress as we speak. A deposit in the amount of one-month services will be required, and for some of the people that would be a very large deposit. And so we agreed to allow them to pay it in payment, but actually divided into twelve payments, and add to their bill each month until it's paid. And of course, they have the option to pay an entire amount in front or make another arrangement. Form needs to be returned to the city, nominated on August thirty-first. And also discussed reimbursement of utility deposits, and we actually ended up table in the, the matter, we'll look at it later. Mr. Doyle provided us with a copy of the letter that has been mailed to the Surd District about our rate increases, and also a certifying, by certified mail, and we had to return receipt. The Horizon Wireless Tower, Mr. Doyle presented committee information about the Horizon Wireless Tower, that was, that was vetoed in June by the mayor, at city council, and a copy of Missouri, Missouri Rise Statutes seventy-seven point two seven zero. We were informed that according to statute, that the, the statute of rise, should the mayor neglect or refuse to sign any ordinance and return the same witness objections in writing, at the next regular meeting of the council, the same shall become law without his signature. And since it was not done, the Horizon Tower will be built. Department updates, Mr. Shelton said his department had two outages, two, two street lights, four trees, ten miscellaneous, five new services, one net metering, and two fixed yards from up in July. Major highlights for July include... Major highlights for July include continued work on Avista, extending the primary in the park, setting a new transformer. Started back to work on the feeder lines, B to C tie, and the G I S data collection of our electric system. Have two feeders completed and half of the third one. Single phase re-closer saved seven power outlets in one in July. Donnie Beal stated that the water wastewater department had eight new meters installed, prepared three water leaks, put in a new drainage water meter at the admin building. Fixed the hydrant or repaired the hydrant, reinstalled the hydrant power we're gonna put downtown area had two sewer, two sewer backups. D and R inspection was set for the following Tuesday. Every three years. And having no further business, we closed four fifty.
Any questions for Mr. Conley? Economic Development, Councilman Rice?
Yes, the meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. There were no citizen's comments. Mr. Randy Brown was present as a guest. The minutes were approved for July fifth meeting. We discussed the business spotlight, which for August's MMI plumbing and excavation. We also discussed new businesses in Waynesville, the Smile Nutrition, which is located inside Phelps Health. We also talked about Endlessly Blessed Boutique, which is located at the Ruby D Plaza. We also discussed Amazon Distribution Partnership Program. It's twenty Waynesville businesses were sent, sent in for referral. It's a great program for small businesses. Doug Potts put together a list of businesses and submitted that to the chamber and selected has a potential to help businesses make fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars a year. Basically, it's delivering packages for Amazon within Waynesville. It's a seven day a week job. I think it was ten to twenty-five packs, something like that. Also discussed commercial track services, commercial trash services, which the new one begins September first, which I talked about. We discussed Hogs and Frogs, the Emergency Services First Responders Meeting. Mr. Potts discussed, the meeting was held already, a lot of law enforcement there. Went over the biking trail grant, trails grant with Greenway on and off road. It's the Great Rivers Greenway has a large connection of pine trails in the area and there's a grant money out there that wants to G I S map all over the trails. Could possibly have some money to make other trails or our trails more bike friendly. Went over the special events, several have already happened. National Night Out, movies in the park, the Price Cutter fifty-fifth anniversary, which was pretty big. The Route sixty-six yard sale, which was two days, already happened. Then we discussed the Route sixty-six Hogs and Frogs, which is going off September twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. The Leap Frog Five K Frog Hill Half Marathon, September thirtieth. Tadpole Ten K, October first. Halloween at the Market, October twenty-ninth. The Pumpkin Fest, October twenty-ninth as well, eleven to three PM. There was a need for closed session. We entered at five seventeen PM. We came out of closed session at six seventeen PM. Having no further business, the meeting adjourned at six eighteen PM. Next scheduled meeting will be held on September sixth at five PM.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? Rosin Grounds, Councilman Farnum?
Rosin Grounds met on August fourth at four fifteen, which is an earlier time than our normal meeting. Meeting was called to order. We had no citizen comments. We proved the minutes. Then we had a citizen, Sean Fleming, who had reached out to the city and referenced the intersection of Long Drive and Collier Drive. There's a yield sign instead of a stop sign, which was safety concern. Senator Doyle stated he could not find the ordinance for the signage on Long Drive and the yield sign needs to be changed to a stop sign. And I suggested that we post the information on the city website, just so people have a heads up. Project updates, Mr. Doyle discussed subdivision improvement program, Mason and Avista should be asphalted by end of October. Jason Chapman, the road supervisor, giving us updates. State of the street department's been busy doing some major patchwork. Built some park gates, finished pouring the fitness pad. Removed fallen trees and keeping the stump dump cleaned up and brush over it, spraying, sweeping, contracted out more, two hundred more tons of salt for the winter. I hope we don't need it, but.
If it's made, we will have.
Majestic and Pinnacle Streets have had, will have installed electric sewer water will be next year, early spring. Another business I brought up that this past month I had witnessed a couple of people fall getting out of a vehicle trying to get up onto sidewalk and throw a post off. And I was kind of wanting to put a handrail there to help them to have something to grab onto so they wouldn't fall down. They did get out there and they redid the paint job on it into a kind of a dirty mustard yellow, but it's very noticeable. It's that real way. If you wondered, if you've seen it, this is what. Anyway, I asked if we had any updates on the Sweeper Road. We've had some people reach out to us and put some emails on the internet and stuff. And Mr. Doyle stated the goal is to have it addressed by spring of next year. We need easements that will fasten a couple of driveways, working on that, so. The early spring, you know. Having known for the business, we regret four fifty-one. And next schedule meeting will be September one, twenty twenty-two at five PM.
Any other question for Mr. Farnum?
Yes, I got a quick one. The stoplight down here by L M C Convenience and the credit union. On the, when you turn left as you're coming this way or right, whatever. The, it doesn't have the arrow, the yellow arrow for the turn. I've had two people that I work with and it wrecks there and they're on me. See if we can get that fixed, like if you go up by, come and go up there, they've got the yellow arrow that flashes when it's, you're still green, but you know, you yellow arrow. Wonder if they could get that changed?
Yes, so we have sent that concern to MoDOT for, to see if they can address that with their, that's their signalized intersection. That's as far as I can take it. I can't, I can't take it any farther than that.
Perfect, thank you.
John, I think that you and planning in our Rosin Grounds ought to be looking into an ordinance, we've been this problem with this cell tower. We need better control of our properties for zoning. So I think that's something we ought to look into, stipulate where they can and cannot go.
In our codes, for sure.
I fully agree with that.
We're working on that, Nathan and I. I think he's in review of one that I sent him, so hopefully he will, we'll get that back and get to Rosin Grounds soon.
All right, we have a bill number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six.
An ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Waynesville and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Transportation Alternatives Funding, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Waynesville and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Transportation Alternatives Funding, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion for this ordinance?
Motion.
Mr. Liberty, have a second. Cecil? Any discussion? Roll call?
We will wait.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corners?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, please committee, Councilman Liberty?
I'll be brief to the mayor.
Oh.
All right, so the Emergency Services and Police Committee, we had the meeting on August fourth at three thirty PM. We had a quorum. We did have guests from the Emergency Services, our department, Alaskan County Emergency Emergency Services Director, which is Shawna McCullum, and her assistant, Janet Schwartz. And we called the meeting to order at three thirty. The minutes were approved from the previous meeting. And the reason for their visit was to help build a relationship. Ms. McCullum has shared a lot of information about what she has envisioned for her purpose and role here to serve our community. So as far as the report itself, she shared some additional training opportunities that we will be partnering with and how we can can foster a better relationship between the city and the county when it comes to preparing for events and so forth and so on. The police department updates, Lieutenant Mark Piles, he stated the police department was approved for a grant for ammo. This is a pending grant for soft targets, barricades, and metal barriers. We also discussed special events only, the special events that had to do with the request of police services, which was of course, the Hogs and Frogs was the only one that was identified at this time of support for the police. And I won't beat the dead horse on that, we already talked about that. All right, so then we went on, we had no further meeting, no no further business. The meeting adjourned at four sixteen PM. The next meeting is scheduled for September eighth, right here at the city, at three thirty PM. Come out and visit.
Any questions for Mr. Wilson? Finance and Human Resources Committee, Councilman Davis?
The meeting was called to order at five PM on August sixteenth. The quorum was established. There were no citizen's comments. The committee approved the minutes and the city approved, or the committee approved to pay the city's bill. Cash flow account status in the year budget review. Committee reviewed the city's cash flow reports, bank account status and year to date budget. The city has completed fifty-eight point three percent of the fiscal year with expenses ending at sixty-six percent and revenues fifty-seven percent. The city bank accounts have a total of five million, five point three million in restricted funds, reserve funds, and usable monies. There is a mid-year budget review, right? The Community Improvement District pursuant to section sixty-seven point one four seven point four. The Missouri has amended the Westgate Community Improvement District annual report for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, was provided by Gilmore and Bell. The city is required to make this report part of its official records and cause it to be spread upon the records of the city. So it has to be put out. Mid-year adjustments, Mr. Doyle stated the budget adjustments that were approved by City Council in July twenty-two are not reflected in this month's budget numbers. The reason is the ordinance has not been signed by the mayor. The budget should reflect the amendments in September twenty-two when the update to the ordinance becomes effective without signature. Add the lower property tax rate, committee discussed the upcoming public hearings, setting the lower tax rate to be held immediately preceding the city council on August eighteenth. That was already done. Other business, censorship of the mayor. I stated that of the date, the mayor had not provided the committee with an action plan as required. Orders of impeachment have been drafted and received by the Finance Committee. The city attorney is preparing the resolution to move forward. Mr. Doyle stated that several day-to-day issues have arisen from the mayor's decision not to sign documents. Some examples include ordinance approved in July regarding the collection of trash deposits from commercial customers, unsigned cemetery deeds that cannot be filed with the county, and ordinance to amend the budget. Mr. Doyle stated that the city clerk, Michelle Brown, has reached out to Mayor Brown on multiple occasions, requesting him to come to City Hall to sign. Committee has asked Ms. Brown to bring an ordinance to the mayor Brown during the city council meeting. Did we bring that? Yes. Mr. Doyle stated the need for a closed session in accordance with legal and real estate matters. Committee intended to close session at five twenty-five. Committee returned to open session and adjourned, open session and adjourned at five fifty. Next meeting will have to be held September eighth, twenty twenty-two at five PM. With this said, there is an update to the censorship of the mayor. The resolution has been written correctly? And we are looking perspective date right now for a special session session of August twenty-ninth.
Standing any questions?
One point. They say they've tried to reach out to me, I have a cellphone, I've got email, I haven't received anything. That's all the point I'm gonna make.
I'm not gonna argue that point, but I went to Michelle's office and you can see that somebody has read the email.
I've never received it.
Somebody opened it up?
I've never received it. I'll bring, I've had it, you can look at it, I've never received it.
Okay. Mute points.
Yes, it is. Waynesville St. Robert, join the airport, we got a proposed ordinance, bill number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight.
An ordinance to establish procedures for disclosure of conflicts of interest to comply with Senate Bill two sixty-two, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance to establish procedures for disclosure of conflicts of interest to comply with Senate Bill two sixty-two, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Wilson?
Second.
Second, Ed? Mr. Liberty? Goes post on the line, police officer. Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Corners?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Waynesville St. Robert, join the airport, meeting. Mr. Liberty?
Meeting was called to order by John Doyle at three o'clock, July twenty-sixth. Budget was provided to the board, which reflected fifty-eight percent in the year revenue, tracking at sixty-six percent. Expenses tracking at seventy-one percent. Motion was made in second and that was approved. Airport Operations Manager, Mike Guy, stated the price of jet fuel has gone down. SkyWest Airline update, application from SkyWest Charter for Community Air Service Authorization, there's been no update provided to us as of yet. Essential Air Service update, Contour will provide service from, which will be, to be announced, to Nashville with a potential start date of possibly October first. Next following meeting on the terminal will be September thirteenth at two PM at Waynesville City Hall. Also went over grant funding, Bob Crane provided update grant funding to be used for the terminal. Three million from state general revenue funding with no match. And nine million federal funding with ninety percent, ten percent match. Three million ATB bill funding with ninety-five percent with a five percent match. Also, there has been few issues on certified weather observer. When the equipment goes down, they really don't have anybody right yet to stand it up as far as checking everything out and letting the airline know prospective weather and stuff like that. We have discussed with some certified and very experienced weather technician, observers? Observers. And that's still under discussion. And nothing further. Next meeting will be the twenty-third?
Yep, Tuesday the twenty-third at St. Robert.
At St. Robert.
Any further questions for Mr. Liberty? Other business? Bring up those ordinances, I'll sign them for you. Bring up those ordinances, I'll sign them for you. City manages report.
I'd like to start with something that's not actually in the report, but there was some interest earlier with U-Sports about volunteer applications. They're, they, these are posted on the website. Volunteer opportunities may be found on the city's website under the community tab, and it is a volunteer and the form is in there. And if you have any questions, again, you can contact city staff. I would also like to kind of address the tap grant that you guys have approved. That was a almost $500,000 grant the city was approved for, and it will address or complete a sidewalk project that you guys have done in the past. Will go from our bridge at the Ribby Doo West to Morgan Street and connect the sidewalks on that side of town. So now, you know, that would be accessible all the way through. I think that, I'd like to thank the staff for their hard work in acquiring that, that grant. Budget review, it's that time again. We will be going through budget reviews and workshops for each department of the city, probably beginning this month. There's a lot of moving parts this year with the grant funds and a lot of grant applications out. There's going to be a lot of moving parts as we get through and trying to finalize our final budget. And honestly, I hope that we miss a grant monies in our budget and have to redo it at the first of the year. I'd like to see us get all the grant monies that, that we've applied for. So we will try to accommodate for these grants as they are approved or not approved. But if, if we get approved, our budget will try to reflect those. So there'll be a lot of movement parts until these are all evaluated. Again, I would like to also express that the City of Waynesville will be collecting commercial trash beginning September 1st, 2022. I know Doug Potts, with others, have worked very hard to start putting that out, giving those applications out, and discussing what that transition's going to look like. And if you've been through our parks lately, you've probably noticed the concrete pad that is set there, poured, and just really set there. With, with the NFC grant that we had received earlier, actually late last year, we have put that into motion. That requires, that pad requires a 28-day cure period prior to construction on the pad. So that, that time has passed, and we plan to begin, or have scheduled to begin work next week, weather permitted. And that's all I have.
Council comments? Start with Amanda.
Again, thank you for everybody at the city. Thank you for all you do for us, all the hard work that goes on behind the scenes. We might be the volunteer face, but you're the ones who put in all the effort. So thank you very much. And school starts back up Monday, so watch out for the kiddos and watch your skin.
As usual, I get cut out there. I was going to mention schools. I have a granddaughter who's a third grade teacher. Actually, today's her birthday. She's busy working at school already. Next week, we have kids. It's going to get dark soon, believe it or not. Got to be careful around the school zones, the flashing lights. Watch for kids.
Mr. Liberty?
What I'd like to bring up is about yesterday. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the SOP annual meeting, which had, and I don't know how many people understand what that's about, but it's all, all about supporting the fort, which also supports St. Roberts and Waynesville. They had a lot of excellent speakers. Mr. Dorsey had briefed us on SOP, and what they've done and what they plan on doing. Major General Bonner briefed on regional community support, the Fort Lenawood perspective. Governor Mike Parsons, Fort Lenawood service members, military family, and veterans' impact on the state of Missouri. And Honorable Roy Blunt, via video, pre-recorded message, partnership, and strengthening Fort Lenawood. Honorable Josh Hawley, Fort Lenawood's role in support of our national defense now and in the future in the SASC perspective. Honorable Vicki Hartzler, future of defense, Fort Lenawood opportunities and challenges view from the HASC. Honorable Rochelle Jacobson, who's the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Installation. She covered how communities can best support Army installations. Mr. Harry Roberts, a military, Missouri military advocate, about actions to support Fort Lenawood service members and families. Mike Bowes, Director of Defense International, Kit Bond Strategy, State Consultant, covered the Washington perspective. Mr. Joe Driscoll, Association and Defense Communities Update. He is media past president, ADC, National Board of Directors. And Mr. Dorsey, retired Commandant, Sergeant Major Dorsey, SOP and our regional strategy going forward. It was excellent. You could learn a lot about what our community and Fort Lenawood is doing to continue to thrive and grow. And there's a lot of business opportunities for businesses and such to become members of SOP. That's all I have.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, I'm encouraged about the citizens' comments. We heard two really good ones tonight, a lot of passion in that. I think you bring it to council and everyone, you get similar resolutions that way. Last month, we got a good one too. And we just want to wish everyone Happy Labor Day, be safe.
Mr. Wilson?
I was going to say, you know, that this community is, is something special. And the reason why I say that is because I've been to many different communities throughout my, my military tenure. And as far as a community and a military installation, as Mr. Liberty was talking about, the SOP really communicates that everyone has the same goals. Maybe our priorities are not always the same. And I think that we all have a heart for the growth of this community, and, and just like tonight, when we had the volunteers that were here expressing their, their passion about serving this community and, and putting our best foot forward. And I think that says a lot about the people that live here, and one of the reasons why I chose to stay here. But I just want to thank the volunteers and everyone here I know, including the councilmen and women, that volunteer every, their time to serve this community because they believe in it. So I just want to say thank you to all of my, my fellow councilmen, councilwomen, and the staff here, but also to those that are volunteering to coach three teams is, that's something else. That's something special in its own, and I'm, I'm saying that that's not something that should be taken lightly to where she said no, she'll just go. I mean, that's just, that's something to be said there. So I just want to say, we would like to have more people volunteer within the community and be a part of our community and making things better. But I also want to say thank you to those that have already done it and continue to do it. That's all I have.
Mr. Davis?
I would like to reiterate about the volunteers. I, I know sometimes I come off a little harsh, but there is actually a huge volunteer problem everywhere that you look at. You can look at the city itself. We all volunteer to be on this council, but there's seven or eight committees in the city also. Some of those committees don't have enough volunteers and members to open up the committee sometime. And then you have, like, the lady there, she volunteers for three soccer teams. I think people are starting to frown on government and so much stuff these days because of bad taste, political sides and everything else, that they no longer want to volunteer, they no longer want to put their face out there. I'll give you an instance, you know, me, for instance, I've probably been beaten down since March 31st, at least five to 10 phone calls a day. So volunteer, and, and if you want something done, you've got to put yourself out there to do it. You, you just can't sit back and, you know, wait for somebody to come knock on your door and say, hey, this is done. You got to get out there and you got to press the pavement and do the work to get stuff done.
Mr. Farnum?
I just want to say everybody have a safe weekend. Enjoy the last little bit of summer. Before you know it, we'll be turning furnaces on and scary thoughts and fried fuel, if you want to do that.
Thank you for your comments. I do want to point out those two ladies that came in, that's probably the best presentation of, of a citizen coming in to point out a problem without accusing us of too much bad faith. We need to work with them as best we can. And the second thing, I wish everyone could have seen when Senator Josh Hawley spoke, and he spoke for quite a few minutes without any notes, the passion he showed about what he's trying to do for this country is unbelievable. That would have been something that everybody should have seen. Your adjourn.